This evening.
Yes, sir.
Let's pray.
Our Father God, we know your word tells us that you bless all those who are faithful and continually walking your ways. And Father, we desire that for our town as well. We thank you for our community, for the way you blessed it for so many decades now. We just ask for your blessings on this meeting, that you would give wisdom and guidance to the council members and to those who have issues, and let good decisions be made. We thank you, Father, for making all this possible. We pray it in Christ's name.
Thank you, George. We have minutes from our October 27th meeting. I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll proceed with reports. Luke's not here. Jennifer, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just a couple of things in your packet, one policy handbook for your review. Do you like to set up a special meeting that we can go over that?
I'd probably do the 18th or the 20th.
I could do evenings that week. That's collection week. I'm busy till four o'clock every day.
I should be fine with either one of those.
I'm out in the daytime on those two days.
Did you do the evening?
I could do the evening.
Chris?
Yeah. I'll do the evening or whatever time.
All right, somebody pick one of those two. We'll do it.
Eighteenth works better for me, Tuesday evening. That works. 6:00 PM, 5:00 PM, what, when do we want to start it?
I think six is fine.
Okay.
Eighteenth to 6:00 PM.
And then the last meeting in December, we usually, we usually cancel the second meeting and then make it. So is there a December date that you guys would like to choose?
I'm okay with either one, 29th or 30th.
If everybody's okay with either one, let's keep it on a Monday. I'm okay with either day.
Is Monday, the 29th, okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Are we doing daytime or evening?
Evening's fine.
Six o'clock?
Yep.
Six o'clock.
That is actually all I have. I will be working on the salary ordinance. And then, Maria, I know you and I talked about time clock system, so I'll have some information and advice.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have tonight.
Good deal. Any questions for Jennifer? All right, Luke is not here. Alex, you have anything for us?
Just a couple of things, and they're relatively short. I think you've asked some questions recently about the status of engagement for creating a utility district.
Yes.
We have reached out several times to the attorney that I think you originally spoke with, Mr. Boxberger, including again today, and just aren't getting much back.
Okay.
We can continue to do that, but it's how hard do you want to drive it? And at what point do you want to look for somebody else if we're not
Sure.
getting a response? Because it's, it's really driven by, you know, how hard you guys want to press it, how important that particular project is to get done right away. All I can do is tell you what we're doing and just continuing to tell them, look, we need, we need a more comprehensive scope of work. You may recall that the original engagement letter they sent had really nothing in there related to the specific scope of work for creating a utility district and was more of a general council-type engagement letter. So we said, hey, look, we need something that says, here's what you're going to do
Sure.
to create this utility district. They've, they've never provided us anything more than that.
Well, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts, but my thought would be to try to reach out to them a couple more times. And if they haven't come back with anything by the next council meeting, maybe we'll
Look for a different attorney.
Look for a different attorney.
That's fine.
I think that seems like the proper move at this point.
So add that items to mention where we were. I, I will note that, and I don't know what brought this up, though. I noticed on the county council's agenda, they had as an agenda item, looking back at or, I guess, asking what's going on with the stuff that we brought to their attention back in 2023, and that they note they referred to the county attorney, and I guess they're looking for a status on it.
Our property down here?
Yeah, the, the one that we asked them to get rid of the taxes.
Okay.
So I don't know if any of you mentioned it, but I noticed it was on their agenda as an item, almost like it would look if they were saying, hey, county attorney, what's the status of this? We referred this to you two and a half years ago. So maybe that will shake something loose and the county attorney will say, well, geez, I haven't done anything with it two and a half years. Maybe I should. So anyway, I just, I noticed that on the county council's agenda. I'd mention that to you guys. Litigation matter that's open, just status update. We've asked for judgment. There is a hearing set on that matter. I don't think it's until February. I'd have to go back and check the exact date, but there is a hearing set on that matter where we've asked for judgment, and maybe we can bring that to a close.
Okay.
As far as the towns concerned, that wouldn't, wouldn't end the battle between the property owner and the county. But we have asked for judgment in favor of the towns as to you guys, to try to end that as to the town. So as we get closer to that, if we need anything, we'll let you know. Otherwise, we will just prepare for the hearing and try to put that matter to bed. Final thing, as we move toward the end of the year, I just wanted to talk to you guys about efficiency. I know at the end of each year, you talk about whether or not you retain the various folks that you hire. If you do want to keep us, it's always important to us to try to keep the fees low. That's, that's been one of the big things. I mean, I know I looked at what we're doing. We, we charge you guys at a little over a 60% discount off our normal rate. We think we can continue to do that if we work on efficiency. And we looked at what we do that's, that's inefficient, where we can maybe be better. And quite frankly, one of the biggest things that's inefficient from our perspective are some of these meetings where we don't have a lot going on or there's not something special. I can put these reports in paper and save four to six hours a month on the two meetings where we're driving up here and listening to all the stuff that doesn't, isn't legal in nature. And I want you guys to think about that, because that four to six hours a month that we spend driving up here and sitting at the meetings could probably be better spent on things like the litigation and the ordinances that we write. We're not opposed to coming up here. We just want to be efficient. And if the, if the choice becomes, we can keep coming, but we have to raise the rates, or we can use the time on the litigation matters and ordinances and all of these other issues, then we're perfectly happy to leave the rates where they've been for the last five years. But I want you guys to start thinking about that, because that is our biggest inefficiency, is the drive time back and forth and sitting and listening to the reports that, that aren't legal. The only other thing we do, of course, we get questions presented to us. But quite frankly, we shouldn't be answering those questions on the spot in a public forum. They should be questions that are given to us before the meetings and then delivered to the council as need. All of you know how to get ahold of me. And in fact, I think maybe Pam and Chris are the only ones I haven't spoken to at some point. You know, Maria, I talked to you. Jennifer, I talked to you. Fred, you've certainly called him. Tim, even you I've spoken to on the phone. We're available to any or all of you anytime you need to talk to us. And I think we're pretty easy to get ahold of, so I certainly don't want to create a situation where you feel like you can't, can't speak to your legal counsel as, as or when you need us. So, and again, we're, we're happy to keep coming, but I just, I know what that's going to lead to. I'd, I'd rather present the option that if it makes more sense for you guys to do everything we can to keep the rates where they've been, I, I'm, I'm happy to do it. But that's our easiest way to do that, is to cut inefficiency. I wanted to bring it up before we got to the end of the year, when you guys start thinking about it.
Sure.
If you've got questions, but let us know. Something to think about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Alex?
Sounds good. Yeah, I said Craig. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I get you two mixed up.
Well, I suppose we'll move on to old business. And Ball Diamond, I'm sorry I see you here, but I, I don't have a copy for you.
I asked her to be here.
But
Thanks to ask her.
Sure. But I just want to start, get that out of the way, is I don't have anything for you to review right now, but I can get something to you tomorrow. But Tim, you have anything specific here?
After we go over the, she, she's here to let us know what in the concession stand is Tipton Baseball and what is ours. And from the conversation that I had with Chris, that it was everything except the fryer is Tipton Baseball. Does anybody know any difference in that?
Do they have refrigerators and stuff in there?
The big refrigerator went bad. We got rid of it. Is there a small, the white refrigerator?
No, there's two large coolers that are ours, and then we replaced where the refrigerator sat with a new fridge.
Okay.
And that's ours also. We have the press machine, the hot dog machine, popcorn machine. A chili cheese machine went back to who we ran it off of. So everything that's in there that isn't nailed down is ours, but we took all of the door guy stuff and put it up in the press box.
Yes, yeah.
I called it out. She thought it was okay.
I remember moving some things up there as well.
We took everything out that was Atlanta and put it up in the press box so that it wouldn't get mixed with ours. But the rest of everything that's in there is ours.
Except for the deep fryer.
Well, yeah, the deep fryer is built in, so there's, we didn't, we didn't break that.
She's also here to answer any questions that might come up.
Okay. Well, yeah, facilities an agenda item. I'm assuming that, since I don't know you all, you might be the
I can give you an introduction.
Yeah, let's do that.
Mr. and Mrs. Floor are here. They are the ones who've made an offer on the Ball Diamonds, and they're here to answer any questions and for us to ask them any questions. But there was something we were going to ask them, and I can't remember.
Well, in the, in the purchase agreement, there was the, the deal about the real estate fees.
Yes. That was one thing, yes.
And then the other thing was zoning classification, and if that would need to be changed. And I, I do think, what, what would you all, just so everybody, actually, if one of you wouldn't mind going up there and speaking into the microphone for the record, that would be great. We'd like to hear, the whole town would like to hear what you would plan to do with the property if you were to buy it.
My wife and I, we own a concrete construction company, and we're wanting to put a shop and stuff there. It would be pretty much identical to the way the boat operation is across the street. We'd have two or three pole barns like that to store equipment in. Some of the larger trucks, we would keep outside. We're a small company. We employ about 15 to 20 people. Our hours are from six to seven in the morning to about six or seven at night. We hardly ever work weekends unless we get rained out or something during the week. We don't like to work weekends because we work so much. Is there any other questions?
You, you did say that there would not be any concrete trucks.
No, 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 no concrete trucks, no piles of gravel. We wouldn't make concrete there, nothing at all like that.
So it's just some vehicles, trucks?
Correct, yeah. There'd be some large trucks, there'd be some dump trucks and some box trucks and stuff like that. There would be that. There, but there wouldn't be any making of concrete or anything like that. We'd go out to 19. We'd never drive down the side streets or anything like that. Also, we keep all the, you know, because I, I've noticed on the way here, there's a weight limit if you go north.
Yes.
So we, we would never go that way. We'd just go straight out to 19, then go to our job sites.
Mr. Johnson had mentioned that you all were, if you did buy, thinking of repurposing one or more of the existing buildings there.
Well, there's a restroom or a couple of restrooms there. We, we may, we'll probably, you know, maybe keep one of those buildings, you know, for, have the restroom facilities for our employees. As far as the fencing and, and stuff like that, all that would probably be torn down
Sure.
you know, room for our buildings.
What about, so would the business actually be based out of that property?
Yes, it would.
So there, that would actually become the business address?
Correct.
Okay. So any kind of office space or anything like that?
No, we, the wife and I, we run the office out of our home and stuff right now, so there really wouldn't be an office per se there. Once the guys would come in, you know, they would go to their job sites for the day, then we'd come back over in the evening. So there really wouldn't be anything, you know, going on through the day most of the time.
Okay.
So does that site meet the needs of the employee, parking and?
Yes, yes. I think it's large enough. And like we talked a little bit, you know, we're going to have to get some drainage issues resolved. And then the larger parcel, I believe that would allow enough, you know, to get the drainage and everything from the parking lot into that area.
And I, I know we've talked about this, but I'm just guessing. Tipton Baseball is going to be playing there, and you would be open to allowing them to play until, it's in the contract, to play until the end of June.
Absolutely, yeah. I have no problem at all with that.
Okay.
As far as the concession and stuff, you know, that's not a big deal. You know, I just, you know, if some of the stuff were stayed, great. If not, it doesn't matter to us.
We might be able to get them, get them to throw in a popcorn maker. I'll talk to Chris though.
Do you have some to get popcorn?
They do. I'm first taking it.
Yeah.
CML Concrete. We, we pour basement walls for residential homes.
Do you have any employees that live in?
I, probably 10 employees live local. My, my son lives just over, you know, just east of Atlanta. My brother-in-law, he lives in Atlanta, right there by the Dollar Channel, that little subdivision right there. My other son, he lives in Noblesville. It's, it's a family-owned and operated business. We've been in business for about 23 years now.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this an offer that you've accepted?
No.
No.
Or is it just one of the?
No, this is, this is the only official offer that we have received, though, at this time, and it is at our asking price.
Do we have an asking price? I don't know.
Yes, yes. Are we allowed to say it?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to share?
So the, the offer is for $450,000. And that money, our intention would be, if we were to go forward with this deal, would be to put that money right back into our park. So.
It's not, it's not that amount of money.
Does anybody else have any questions for?
Well, no, I don't. The only thing that I think that we have discussed and would like to have, and we have discussed with you, is to split those fees rather than, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I know we'll probably have to send a, a response back and then you accept it, but I just want to make sure that, you know, because if we're going to vote, we're going to have to vote on that. You know what I mean? So you're acceptable to that?
Okay, let's, let's touch briefly on zoning classification. So that property zone, special commercial. I don't believe that that would fit your needs. It would probably
No, I don't think it does, the way we were speaking.
Yeah, so I was looking at our different zoning districts. I'm thinking either C2 or C3 would probably fit pretty well. That's something that we as a council can't just change. But I do think that we could probably, the council members are some of the members on the Plan Commission as well. And we recently become better educated on the, the process for rezoning, and I think that we could move through that process pretty quickly. And if the, if the Plan Commission made a positive recommendation to the council, the council would approve that.
Sure, yeah. I, I think that's the only contingency we had in buying it. We wanted to make sure we could zone it for our appropriate business.
Sure.
So the close and the transfer of money would be contingent upon us changing that?
That happened, okay.
But in, in the, in the offer, it says something about the 21st.
It's just to let you know we're serious, and we can go as quick as you can go.
We can't go that quick.
Right, but that was our intention, to let you know that this is as clean as it gets. So basically, once we agree everything, I can rewrite that with their signatures and resubmit what we've agreed to, and just say closing by the end of the year or something. I mean, does that
Sure.
applicable timeline or what do you think?
I, I would, I would think so. I, the
It's only three more meetings after this one. So
That's not, your, your biggest hurdle is going to be getting the rezoning done in that time.
Right, that's what I mean.
You should have some notice periods and things like that, so.
I just read those last night. It's 10 days before the public hearing, so. Yeah, it'd be a Plan Commission deal, which we need to schedule one of those anyway. But so that application has to get filled out and submitted to the Plan Commission. Then a public hearing date has to get set, has to be advertised, two property, two unique owners away or an eighth of a mile, whichever's less, would need to be notified of that public hearing. The Plan Commission holds a public hearing. They make a recommendation to the council. And then the change will be made in ordinance form, I believe, right?
But they, the buyer would be responsible for sending the letters to the
Yeah, we've done it before. We have to send out a certified letter, like he says, you know, to adjacent properties and stuff.
I would say that that probably is, if it's a contingent offer,
That's off the
that would be the town trying to rezone our property before we sell it.
Oh, so the town's trying to do it. Yes, because it's not theirs to resell. We would have to rezone it.
Yeah.
So we would have to do it.
Yes.
I mean, if, if they can get an application in, I mean, we're getting a cart for the horse, but if applications made before our next meeting, when we have a planning commission meeting, then
The town council could fill out the application and submit it to the Plan Commission. We just need to schedule a Plan Commission meeting, I guess.
Wouldn't that be in the next meeting, our regularly scheduled planning commission? Isn't it always the second?
Oh, we could, I think we could make all the separate
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Second meeting. Were there any other issues with that offer that you have questions about?
I, I did have another question on, under closing, section H. The closing, it says date and then 3%, which we're going to split. And then under that, it says fees. He shall be split, shared equally. What fees are we talking about?
So like the fee from title company?
Okay.
So buyer will handle all buyers' closing fees, seller handles all of sellers', right? So any outstanding taxes that, you know, are approved to the date of closing, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Then it's just a basic fee?
For the actual transfer of title.
And it's usually around $300 or, you know, something, and we'll split that equally.
So we're looking at less than $1,000 bucks?
Okay.
That's, that's all the questions I have.
So how do we want to?
How can we accept contingent?
I mean, I'm sure we could motion to that effect, you know, contingent upon
These things being in the contract.
Rezoning to the buyer's
I don't think we need to do that, Maria. I think what we need to do, because that's in the contract.
Yeah, that's already in the contract. What we need to change is
Percentage.
Percentage.
So that would be the only thing we would
That's the only thing we need to change. I can email it back to you guys.
Do we need to do anything on this, then? You want to just get us
I'll just do it right now.
Something with the right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we either need to accept or reject that. Or make a counter offer, which I think we just did, and she's going to resubmit.
We want to change it, simplify it, so we're not, y'all aren't
Do you have any suggestions on how to navigate this?
You, you can do it one of a few ways. You can either vote to accept a contingent on those changes, but I understand she's being ready to make those changes and send them to you. I think technically, you should, if you want to accept this contingent on the changes, you should do it that way rather than considering a contract with different terms. Because we said, we have advertised that we were going to do or be dealing with this. So if she makes the changes, which is what we want to happen, but technically, we would be considering a new contract.
Right.
You're better off addressing this one and saying, we will take it subject to these clarifications and, and adjustments.
Sure.
We just have to know that that's acceptable.
So if we were to move forward with that, then the changes would be that percentage and then the actual closing date, I suppose.
Yeah, so it does make the closing date 31st of December and change the permission one and a half.
Oh, shared equally, one and a half.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion that we accept this offer contingent upon the change of fee to one and a half and the change of the closing date to 12/31.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Sorry, folks.
Ladder history there for you.
My heart. It's just my heart.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all. We appreciate it. We look forward to working through this deal with you all and, and having you all as fixtures around town, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Once you get all of this figured out, could you let us know since we will be doing the electricity in the water and how that's all going to
Sure.
turn out? We would need to know in order to tell the city of Tipton.
Just Yeah.
What's going on.
Yeah. The contract that they're in that we're about to renew, they cover all utilities while they, during the time of that lease. But the way that it's written, I believe the utilities remain in the owner's name. And so then you all are basically paying monthly for those utilities to the owner to cover whatever that bill is. And so that's how that's written. And I don't see, that seemed like the best way to structure a contract, because then you don't ever have any lapses Cause then you don't ever have any lapses or anything like that. So I don't know if there's strong feelings about that, it's probably time to mention that. But, uh, otherwise, we'd probably do it the same as we have, Christine.
And then as far as the, the.
It would be them, yes, so, um, you would sign your renewal with us, but you'll, you'll pay them whenever they take ownership, so.
Okay, and then, uh, just something we did last year, we paid once we, if I could go and.
I think that's how it's written, it's, was March first or something like that, I think is what's written in the contract, but.
So you must let me know.
Yes, yeah, I'll be in touch tomorrow or the next day. Okay, uh, Mr. Salzbruner is here from Fleece and Vanderbrink. We've been working on identifying the segments of, of our street inventory that need to be. Milled and paved, and I believe that we've worked together and identified those. And so he's put together, uh, a project that he submitted for that community crossings grant. And he's here to fill us in on all the details and, uh, and go over whatever their fees will be as we go through this, um, this whole process.
Thanks, Marie, um, as Marie said, I'm Chad Salzbruner, I'm with Fleece and Vanderbrink, we're a consulting firm. We got an office in Indianapolis, Danville, and Fort Wayne. And as Marie said, uh, the town was, is trying to, they've already applied for, but they're trying to receive funds for something called Community Crossing Matching Grant. This is state funds that are administered by the state of Indiana. It used to be that they would do this twice a year, now they have limited to once per year. And once the, once we were notified that these funds were available, uh, communities were allowed to apply for these funds starting in October of this year through the end of October of this year. So as Marie said, we met, um, looked at some streets that could use some improvements in town. And we put together some construction cost estimates for those six routes. And based upon those six routes and the intended improvements, those six routes came up to a construction cost of approximately five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So based upon that information, we submitted, uh, an application to NDOT. And with that five hundred and sixty thousand, NDOT covers eighty percent of the construction costs. The town would be responsible for the other twenty percent of the construction costs. So based upon that five hundred and sixty thousand, that would be approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That would be the town's responsibility. Now that also is subject to, um, how the bids would come in from the contractor. We try to, we try to err on the side of caution, we try to apply for, um, enough funds that we can try to avoid any unforeseen costs during construction. We try to avoid having the construction costs exceed essentially what we had applied for. Cause we, we would like to avoid the, the town paying a hundred percent of, of any, any construction cost overruns. So we applied for the, we applied for that application, um, as I mentioned, there's a hundred million dollars, I think, I think I mentioned, there's a hundred million dollars available this year. But those are, those are any town, counties, cities, they also, um, have the availability to, to apply for those funds. Since the town is, has a population of less than ten thousand dollars, that is why they are able to get up to eighty thousand, or excuse me, eighty percent of the construction costs covered. If you're a larger community, if you have a population of over ten thousand, I believe then it drops to seventy-five percent of the cost. Being, uh, let me actually say that, I should check before I say that. But at any rate, the cities, the towns match would be eighty percent of the construction cost. I brought some guidance document with me to, uh, it's not, actually, if you were exceeded ten thousand in population, um, it would only cover fifty percent of the construction costs as opposed to eighty percent of the construction costs.
Could you repeat that?
If your population exceeded ten thousand.
Okay.
Um, NDOT would only cover fifty percent of the construction costs.
Got it.
Uh, the town, as part of their application process, submitted a financial commitment letter in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. As I stated earlier, the towns match, if they did receive funding for all six of those projects, would be approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of the twenty percent local match. What I would recommend is, one of the criteria for this funding is that, as soon as you are awarded these funds, you only have, any community only has three months to get, to have a contract to select. So what I would suggest, since we haven't started any of these design services yet, there's going to be some of these roads where we have to do a topographic survey. There'll be design services, we'll have to essentially get the projects designed, uh, specifications, the project manual all set to go. So that when the town does receive a notification of award, we need to be able to take those and take them to bid as quickly as possible. So to start the process now would be my recommendation. I don't know when, NDOT is going to make an announcement of when, of who is receiving what, what funds. Uh, and you may be concerned about, well, if we start doing this now and we don't receive these funds, are we, are we wasting our money? If we started these fun, if, if we started that design process now, get it, got those projects ready to go to bid, even if you receive no funding, or you receive funding for some of your projects, what we weren't awarded in this round, there's going to be another round of applications in July of two thousand twenty-six. I mentioned the three months, NDOT really wants us to be shovel ready with our projects when they, when they announce these awards. Because they would like to get them to construction as soon as possible. That's why they're giving you that window of three months, uh, once you receive the award, they want you to have your contractor on the contract. As I mentioned earlier, you could receive no funding, you could receive all the funding, you could receive funding for two or three projects. We don't know how that's all going to shake out, uh, some of that's going to have to do with, with how many other communities are applying for these funds. NDOT says that they score these applications, I don't know that they've said how they score these applications, um, so we'll have to just wait and see.
Thank you.
But how those awards shake out. So yeah, as I mentioned earlier, uh, I was going to have these projects shovel ready. Even if you don't get the award, all the award that we're hoping for, we're still going to use those designs for the July two thousand twenty-six application. And the six streets, I don't know if you had received an burial map. Those six streets. Meridian Street, Jackson Street. Sorry about that.
Oh, purple.
Um, Meridian Street, Jackson Street, Heritage slash Allison, Hopkins, Michael, and Walnut. Those are the six streets that we had applied for receiving funds. And the proposal letter, uh, we set it up so it references, but references back to a professional services agreement that the town's already entered into. So it's, it's, it's referencing essentially terms, conditions that have already been, been approved by, by the town, um, previously. And within that proposal, it references that, that professional services agreement that was already approved. And then it goes through and summarizes the services that are included in that, in this proposal letter. Um, it covers preliminary engineering, bidding assistance, construction, and, and closeout assistance. And it also covers a topographic survey, there'll be a couple of streets that we, we want to do a little bit of topographic survey. So we're making sure that we're, we're picking up things as far as, um, one of the things that NDOT requires is, is when you're doing milling and resurfacing, full depth, full depth reconstruction, whatever that may be. When your improvements are touching existing ADA ramps, sidewalks, et cetera, we're forced to make sure that, that those type of things are ADA compliant as part of our project. So we would want to, as quickly as possible, get through the preliminary engineering surfaces, services, the topographic survey, so that we're in a position that when we do receive any type of word on, on an award, we can, we can then go, go to the bidding phase as well. So the bidding assistance would be help, we'd work with the town to put together the project manual, we'd, we would, uh, work with advertising it. Work on, um, advertising, issuing the plans, uh, review the bids, recommend award, uh, prepare construction contracts on behalf of the town. And then as part of the construction phase, that would be answering any questions during construction. There'll be some submittals that the, the contractors would have to do as far as their pavement that they're going to place. Um, if there's any concrete, they'd have to submit their concrete mixed design. And also there may be submittals, like I just mentioned, or there could just be some questions that are going to come up during construction as far as, hey, we ran into something unforeseen, need some clarification from the consultant on these things. Those are, those are, it includes the project closeout as well, and that requires information to close out the project when it, when it's completed. And then you have to make sure that you, you've closed out the projects to be able to qualify you for, for future CCMG funding. Any questions anybody has?
I have several.
Sure.
On, uh, Jackson Street, currently, I believe there's only sidewalks on the southeast corner. Would that be then putting sidewalks, new sidewalks in on the rest of that, that strip?
There's actually sidewalk on the whole south side.
On the whole side, just covered up by, by Larry's gravel.
Yeah, well, I mean, it crosses his drive, it would cross his driveway.
But, but I mean, you can't see it, it's not really there, it, it, but it is there.
It's there, yeah.
Okay, uh, does that include the other side too, or?
If there's existing sidewalk present, we, we can replace it, even if it's in very bad shape or covered by stone or grass or anything along those lines.
Or not even there, I mean, you would put a new, you would put one that's not existing on the north side of Jackson Street.
If there's sidewalk that's not existing, we, we would not be able to put new sidewalk.
It's, it's basically just to replace existing, um, and what that would kind of start to give us is even though it's not a, what our ideal would be, at least it's replacing some sidewalks, and we'd end up with, uh, a patchwork of good sidewalks that eventually. Together, is kind of what our thought was there.
So, so my next question then would be, the, the design services you talk about, um, like, is that part of the five hundred and seventy thousand? Or is that an additional outlay to get started?
Yeah, the, the five hundred and seventy thousand is just the construction costs.
That doesn't include the, the design services and the things you talked about getting started.
Correct, that does not.
Do you have any kind of estimate as to what that total package would look like? Are we talking fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, that, that would be the forty-five thousand dollars, that would cover the design of all six of those, of those streets.
It, that's not in here anywhere.
It's on the back, it's on the back of the blue page.
Oh, back of the blue page, oh, I see, I got you.
Yeah, that, the forty-five thousand dollars would consider, would include the design services, topographic survey, survey, bidding assistance, and then the construction and closeout assistance, that, all six of those, those routes are, are included in that. And that would be a hundred percent the city's responsibility, the roughly five hundred and sixty thousand, assuming that we, we get awarded all those funds, those would be, those would be covered eighty percent with state money.
So we're looking at one twenty for that, which would be our part, and then another forty-five for the design services, et cetera.
It is twenty percent of the five hundred and sixty thousand is roughly a hundred and twelve thousand.
A hundred and twelve, okay.
And then you'd have the forty-five thousand in addition to the hundred and twelve.
One fifty-seven, that would be.
Is all of the, uh, engineering that you're suggesting, uh, necessary? Or can, is it possible to just identify any trouble areas and engineer those? And then, cause the street already exists, right? The streets already exist and the sidewalks already exist, they're already, it's not like we're installing some, designing something new. Is how I'm thinking about this, replacing what's there, it's, you're milling off two inches, you're putting two inches back on.
We still have to put enough information on the plans and, and, and within the project manual that the contractor has enough information to know what they're bidding and constructing. There are some of these streets that may be simple enough where we basically just put a strip map together that says, we're going from here to here, it's roughly this wide, you're milling and resurfacing an inch and a half. Some of the streets aren't quite that simple, there's a little bit more.
Yeah, Meridian Street, and then these ones here where we were wanting to maybe get some more crown in the street out at the.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're trying to improve the crown, so there's, there's a little more involvement with, with those type of projects. But that, that design services, that's, that's going from ground zero to all the way through the process of designing it and bidding it and answering questions during construction, that's all included in, uh, included in those services.
I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Concerning Walnut, we are currently pay, uh, sidewalking one whole side of that.
Yeah, this is further north, that, the, when we first started paving. Yeah, when we first started paving years and years and years ago, that was one of the first things that got done and we're kind of coming back around. And that was one of those things where I said, if it can be included, we might as well, because I, I remember starting there a long time ago. And it's got some potholes in it now, uh, but it's not horrible by any means. It's, it's, that was, he actually asked the project priority and I said, put that segment last, you know? So if they don't fully fund it, hopefully we get these other, these other ones first.
Well, isn't Jackson one of the ones that isn't that bad also?
I said, no, no, Jackson's terrible.
Really?
Yeah, Jackson and Central area is horrible.
That's the street just north of me.
Yes.
I drive it every day, I, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay, is, are there sidewalks on Walnut?
There are, and on both sides, yes.
So that would include?
Yes.
Both sides, okay.
So yeah, that would include sidewalks, ADA ramps, um, and it's not too much of an issue in Atlanta, um, because it's fairly flat. But even when we, if we had a sidewalk that was going across driveways, we'd have to make sure that wherever that sidewalk crosses that driveway or an alley, street, whatever it may be, that we're not exceeding two percent. So those would be things that we're, that we'll keep an eye on.
So it can't, the sidewalk cannot be more than two percent of the grade of the driveway?
Where, where it crosses that.
Crosses the driveway, it has to be two percent or less.
Correct.
In increase.
To meet ADA compliance, if we're going to have a sidewalk going across it.
Okay, is that pretty much standard?
That is, that is federal law, that makes, that forces us to do that.
That's all the questions I have.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question for the clerk.
You're going to ask a good question.
Engineering fees, Jennifer.
I have a question for Chad.
Those, uh, come out of our LRS and all of that, so when we look at that match, we look at this, I'll just say fifty thousand dollars, forty-five.
And the, the five hundred and sixty thousand total project does not include sidewalks at all?
Yes, yeah, the five hundred and sixty would require all the construction costs for the, all six streets.
So if we did sidewalks, that's included, is that what you're saying?
Sidewalks, ADA ramps, those are included in the five hundred and sixty thousand.
So for the, um, for the engineering fees, is that something that will be paid this year? Or will it be most likely paid next year?
Um, even if we were to start the services immediately, it's already on, almost the middle of November. So you might get billed a partial amount of the forty-five thousand sometime in December. But that, if you would prefer that we wait till January one to send you an invoice, I'm sure that we can. If you would prefer that we wait till January one to send you an invoice, I'm sure that we can work that out.
Yeah, because this will, that would come out of our, the money that we are saving for our pay, which is that LRS.
Do you have a? Uh, I can't remember, what was the projected? Revenue for that fund for next year or those funds?
Well, for LRS, it's, it's, it's around two thousand a month that we get for LRS. For MBH, it's usually about twenty six hundred, but that's split between the two restricted and not restricted, so. But we did budget for next year, we did budget, you know, there's line item for like. Services, you know, that we can.
Jennifer, I can't remember last time we did this, what kind of? Were we able to do some of this stuff in-house?
Well, that's what I was sitting there kind of thinking.
Which I don't know that we're in the position to do that at the moment, but. I just don't, that's, that's why I'm wondering about the, the required engineering, because I don't remember.
And that was with Tryon.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, didn't you guys do our most recent one?
No, no, not for, not for. You guys did our transportation. Yes, you guys did.
Traffic, transportation, yeah.
Yes, they did that.
Okay.
There are some. There are some types of improvements that you can do to roadway. Based upon their condition, like if you, there's crack ceiling.
Sure.
That some municipalities have those resources in-house, where you can pay for that as, as part of a force account. But I think on all of ours, we're at least doing milling, milling and resurfacing.
Sure, no, I, I was thinking more about the, wha- what you're coming, what your proposal is. Which I'm not disputing necessarily that these things are important parts of the, the project, I just don't remember. A large. Expenditure to an engineer as part of going through this process in the past. Again, not saying it's not necessary or warranted, I'm just trying to get my head around it and then obviously we have to figure out how to, how to pay for it too.
Yeah, like I said, if it's, if it's a situation where you don't want to have these design costs until two thousand twenty-six, we could wait till. Even if we sent you an invoice in the middle of December, you really wouldn't, you've got thirty days to pay it, you could. And if you tell me, don't send me something till after January one, we won't send you something till after January twenty-one, or excuse me, January one, whatever. Whatever we have to do to help make that work with your.
This is set up as a, a flat rate, uh, let's say your preliminary engineering services. If you actually were to get here and find that the scope of work was smaller than you thought, is there a way to move on that number?
Well, it's a lump sum, so if we get, get out here and realize that it took us fifty five thousand dollars to do that.
Sure.
We're only going to charge you forty five thousand. So it's, it's kind of a. Uh, you know, can.
Can go here.
We're not gonna ask you for more money if, if we didn't do a good enough job of not being high enough with our fees.
Morgan, I don't know if you need to address this, but does that name change need to happen?
Yeah, on the actual professional services agreement, there's a couple of little things that need to be changed, they're pretty insignificant.
Has that already been submitted to the state?
No, that's, that's for us. This, this list, the. The segment by segment. Deal has been, this was part of your submittal to this, for funding, right? Yeah, where it breaks down each segment.
Yeah, that is something that we are required to submit with, with the application, we're required to submit. A copy of your approved asset, approved asset management plan, the construction cost estimate, the financial commitment letter. And then you, you also had approved an ordinance that allowed Murray to sign the CCMG agreement. As opposed to having everybody have to.
When, when are funds awarded?
We don't know that. I asked NDOT when they thought the awards might come out, they don't really know, they, they said they'd like to have the awards by. Middle of December, but I don't, I hope it's not that fast because I'm hoping that we can get a lot done before. Before the award is announced.
When's the, when do typically they award, give awards out, is it, are we talking December more likely than June?
It, well, I, I would, I would guess it'll probably be the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six. I don't, I would hope it does not go till June before they make their announcements, because then they're going to be. Bumping, bumping, bumping up against that July application period as well, but. I would hate to try to guess what, when NDOT might make those announcements.
But I'm guessing. If you have the history of like, in the last ten years, they usually do it at this time period or?
Yeah, they've been doing it since two thousand sixteen, I don't know if there's a hard and fast, hey, they're usually this many months after the applications are submitted. Um, you know, this year they used to have two, two calls per year. They changed that to one this year and they're gonna have one call next year. You know, based upon the time of year it is now, how, whether they'll have staff available to. Make those decisions and whether they're going to be out of the office. Um, I, I wish I could give you a good answer, but I don't, I don't have a good answer when that might happen. I would guess first quarter of two thousand twenty-six, but. We'll see.
Did you have a question? Uh, Jackson Street on the south end of town. The east block of Meridian Street, uh, the edge of the pavement there is, it's been paved recently, but the edge of the pavement. The, the road underneath is failing, so it needs a full depth repair there. Uh, the north two blocks of Walnut Street, the original part of Hopkins Drive, the original part of Michael. And the original part of Allison, which is from Hopkins all the way out to State Road nineteen.
That's in the subdivision.
Yes, yes, yep.
Something we have to make a decision on tonight.
Well, that's what I was just thinking is, we, we need to try to figure out. What we're gonna do funding wise, so I think we need to be able to look at that a little bit more closely. Before we promise. We entered an agreement that, that we may have difficulty paying for, so. We're square to what you've done now, right?
We didn't charge anything for what we've done now.
That original deal that I signed with you.
Oh, that was, that was for a different, different project, it was just that PSA was, it was that for the.
Oh, this is for the asset management.
Yeah, that.
So we already did that.
Yeah, that's, that project's already been completed, I believe we've been paid in full. We just use a proposal letter to, to reference that PSA that was already in place.
Okay. I think that between now and our next council meeting, we should be able to get. Uh, do some research into next year and, and strategize a little bit and try to figure this out. So, we, we were very diligent about setting aside funds for this project for. As it, as it pertained to the, the work itself, but I guess, uh, engineering was an oversight. And so, uh, I think we can solve that problem, but, but we need some time to look at it, so.
As I said, if it's, if it's something where you, you want us to wait till. Calendar year two thousand twenty-six to invoice, if that makes it easier, that's, that's.
And is this, is this document set in stone, or are we able to make changes? That, that spells out the specifics, you know, like the streets that are being done, sidewalks being done, so on and so.
Was that the proposal letter that you were referencing?
Probable construction cost.
Oh, that, those are, that's been submitted to NDOT.
Been submitted.
That was part of the opinion of probable construction cost for those six routes.
So that is the project, they'll award grants or not award grants on that, on that information.
But it will be per segment, right? So we prioritize them kind of worst to best. So if we only got part of the funds. It would cover, well, or it would cover starting at Jackson Street and then Meridian Street and then the subdivision. You know?
What they'll, if you don't get all of your funds, what they'll do is, well, they'll, they'll tell you, these are the streets that you have funding for. So they're not just gonna say, hey, here's X amount of dollars, they're gonna say, well, based upon your application. Jackson Street was this much and your other streets were this much, here are the either zero or all six or somewhere in between there. Where they'll say, cause they're looking at all of these applications that they received, they have a hundred million dollars, they're trying to figure out. How does that hundred million dollars get distributed between all of those communities? In all these different routes.
Well, sorry, we can't, uh, give you anything tonight, but, but we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
I had a question for Jennifer on concerning this. In looking at. Uh, Walnut Street. All, all item number sevens on here are zero tree removal. Except for Walnut Street has two trees that.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if we actually need to do those or not.
If we did, wouldn't that come out of our tree removal budget?
No, it's funded in this project.
Oh, okay.
He included that as a project cost.
Okay, but as far as our funds that we have earmarked to do the trees, can we can't do that?
It's out of us.
I understand that, but we were talking about how do we make up the money?
Oh, I see.
In different funds.
I don't think we can make adjustments. Here for that, I think adjustments would potentially be made during the project as a change order.
Okay, so when Jennifer's looking at where the funding's gonna come from to pay for this match, she can't use part of the tree. Stuff that we already have. Set aside, because we're.
Well, we can move that money around, just reappropriate it.
Okay, I just thought you were looking for like.
Yeah.
Other ways to fund this, cause of the fees.
Yeah.
So we can talk about that later, it just.
I see what your, your thought was on that, it makes sense. Okay, uh, let's move along here, uh, library, I don't have much else except that I did meet with a potential contractor over there. He's working on getting me some numbers. And I'm still waiting on the masonry bid, I'm gonna call him and remind him to send it to me. But, time's ticking, so.
Did you see the text message I sent you about the people who build doors?
I did, and I looked at their website, I've not made it contact with them.
Okay, I, I've seen some of their work and it's beautiful.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what they charged for it or.
Sure.
The lead time, but it is a gorgeous door that they built, so I know they do good work.
Yeah. No, I, 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 I was impressed by their website. Uh, sidewalks, uh, we are in the midst of replacing this stretch here from essentially, uh, the alley south of Maine. All the way down to Kaufman along the east side of Walnut Street, uh, so far, so good, it's looking pretty good, Nick's moving right along on it. We did however, um, have the matter of, uh, a tree that's near Mr. Stamps' house. And, uh, we had our, uh. Tree service come out and look at it and they recommended removal. Um, it's, and, uh, I was confusing it with another tree when I was asked about it before. There's another tree nearby on the other side, on his side of the sidewalk, that's a lot healthier of a tree, that one out front there is looking pretty sparse.
Yeah, I looked at it too, I agree. Then the tree people said, take it out?
Yes.
I also looked at that this evening before the meeting and there's some concrete that's around that. There used to be a drive that come from that concrete pad that goes out into the street. But that concrete is around that tree, so if we could have Nick remove that, so that when they cut that tree down, they can also.
Actually take the stuff.
They can always get the stump out as well.
Yeah.
You grind it or pull it.
Between Nick and Luke, I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
Figure that out.
Okay. And then also there was some vandalism on our sidewalk.
I was not aware of that.
I don't know if you guys were aware of that, someone took a stick and scratched, uh, scratched some real nice wood thing. So. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I showed it, Ronnie and I.
As, uh, are, are you aware of that?
Yeah, I already took a report on it.
Okay. No ring cameras or anything like that around?
Nah, it's got the same. Officials or whatever in it at the library.
Okay. Is that a significant portion of it?
It's a couple, what would you say, Ron, a couple of, couple of sections, isn't it? Where he's put the expansion joints, you know, the.
Yeah.
This is not funny, but Nick mentioned the contractor offering a reward. And he said, I'll, I'll offer it out of my own pocket for information, leading to the arrest and conviction of whoever this is. Now, you know, we've been down that with, with parts and things, but I would love to know who, who did that. I know we had a disgruntled neighbor there.
Yes.
She made a couple of phone calls to the town hall.
I, I spoke with her.
Did you?
As well, and one, one of the issues, I, I meant to stop down there, but I ran out of time before coming here. One of the things she did bring up and, and the engineer was talking about, she said that. The sidewalk going across her driveway is way too high, so if that does.
What driveway?
No, she said, she said driveway. But, oh, I specifically asked her whether it was the alley or the driveway and she said both, I didn't know she had a driveway. She doesn't have a driveway?
She's got a little gravel strip along there that she kind of pulls off.
There's, there's a pad that you can pull right up in front of where the hitch on the trailer is.
It's not finished, everything will be graded out.
I, I told her I will ask about it.
The, the, the grass areas would be graded out with dirt and the stone areas will be graded out.
Cause she was just concerned that water might pool there on, on the other side of the sidewalk. So I said I'd ask and I asked.
So are they, I have a question, are they allowed to put gravel on sidewalks, homeowners? I had someone call that.
To cover an existing sidewalk?
Well, he's, he would like to pour gravel, um, put gravel on his driveway and he's got a sidewalk there and wants to go over it. I don't think the sidewalk's any good, but you know.
When you put sidewalks in, are you gonna make them take care of it?
I mean. Our ordinance doesn't allow for anything being placed on a sidewalk. But I understand sometimes it's hard to tell some of these sidewalks now if they were a sidewalk, so.
Brand new, I would say, no.
If, if it's, I, I don't know. I think we should probably look at it, but I think the answer should probably be no until we look at it.
Are those sidewalks, the size that we agreed to? Are they four feet?
Yeah.
Cause they just driving by, they looked skinny the other day when I went by.
It does, but no, they're four feet.
They are four feet, okay.
I mean, I haven't put a tape on it, but that's what I told him to make them, so.
I didn't want him insulting by doing that while he was there, so I figured I'd ask.
Those, those ADA pads that he bought are four, four foot sidewalk, so.
Okay.
Those go edge to edge, so I'm assuming it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so back around to the tree. We might, that'll fall into, I guess, uh. Our additional appropriation, we're gonna have to do it anyway. But I do think that we need to remove that tree, does somebody want a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we remove it.
Sorry. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
I have a question regarding sidewalk. Is it a verbal agreement or a bit contractually written, written Mr. Harris? As far as after the sidewalk completed, that the, with the grassy areas as close to possible as possible. Along and between the street and sidewalk and the home.
It's, it's verbal, um, I can tell you that whatever we do, whatever's on our property. May not be to your standard. Meanwhile, try our best, but you, it's pretty hard to reach your level of thought care, so. Yes, yes, it'll be graded out, not, yeah, it'll be graded out nice and in spring we'll throw some grass seed down. Yes. But yeah, it's verbal to answer that part.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, planning commission, we do need to set a, a public hearing. Yeah. Okay, uh, plan commission, we do need to set a, a public hearing for the existing rezone application. And they need. I think if we did that for our next meeting, prior to our next meeting, that's fourteen days from today. If notification were made this week, that still would meet that ten day. Does anybody have thoughts about that or would, I mean, is there a preference to move to December or do you think we can just go ahead and do it?
I think we should do it now. They've been waiting a while.
Okay. So that would be a public hearing for the plan commission on the twenty-fourth.
And time?
Five thirty?
Five thirty?
Five, five thirty.
Public hearing before the meeting or after?
Well, yeah, so before, before our council meeting.
I mean, before the planning commission meeting or?
It is part of it.
As part of it.
Yes.
Don't we usually meet at five thirty for planning? Five forty? Five thirty, okay.
Five thirty on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Planning commission.
Um, all right. It's the employee handbook. Everybody's going to review that before our meeting about that. Uh, all right. Old business from the council anymore?
Old business?
No. All right, on to new business. We've got a leak adjust. Um, and leak was in the service line, so that's eligible for adjust. It looks like the repair was verified. Um, in the amount of.
Okay, so I, what do you guys want me to do on this one because it's actually um, person that they grant? So there's no history um, at all, um, showing this because it's a company. And so when somebody moves out, it goes back to them and they just get the um.
We did the last time.
But they replaced, they found a leak in the yard and they replaced the line.
Yes.
Or repaired the leak.
Yes.
Were, isn't there, is there a history of when someone was living there?
Yeah.
What it was?
The usage is going to be so different.
Yeah, the usage will be definitely different.
Do you want to just do a percentage, twenty-five percent, fifty percent of the gallonage off, something like that? You know, I, I didn't see that. I don't know how big it was.
It wasn't ver- I mean, what they're asking for, I think was a hundred dollars.
Seats was eighty-seven, forty-five.
Yeah. For part of a, for over what period of time? Was that like in the first week they were here?
Yes.
Okay. Since we don't have a history, does somebody just want to make a motion with the, with the percentage?
That we, the one oh nine thirty-five, is that, is that what they're wanting to adjust?
That's the whole cost, yeah.
Yeah, that's the actual cost, the sewer cost.
So we adjust that to the average cost or the minimum cost?
Oh, just the minimum bill?
We could do it in a minute.
What's that, fifty?
It's thirty-four twenty-eight. It's a sewer, thirty-four twenty-eight sewer.
Which gives them two thousand gallons. Is that your motion?
I am, yes, it's my motion.
Awesome, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So. Okay. Any other new business from the council?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, wait, I have to find my notes. Oh, um, I would like to have a discussion or make a, a recommendation that we start taking names for. You and I had a discussion about park board, uh, and what it takes to get people on park boards and there's a process. I understand it has to be to go through to do that, that.
So, yes, um, so you're wanting to start getting some names of some candidates now?
Well, my, my thought was to not get a park board, but get an advisory board. And put people on there. It might turn into the park board. Get them involved in it and say, you guys figure out how to do this and let them do it and come back to the recommendation. This is how we get people on the board. This is how we do things. That way we're not saddled with it. Somebody could just, four or five people can get on a board, an advisory committee and come up with a solution and then report back.
You have thoughts on that?
On doing an advisory board?
Yeah, is that something that we can just create?
Sure, it doesn't have, I mean, if all you're doing is looking for an advisory board to give you names and you're not altering the actual.
Sure.
Process for setting it. I mean, that, that's about like an exploratory committee essentially.
I think that sounds fair. I don't know how to structure that, but is it fairly informal even maybe?
I would say.
Right now?
Is it DNR?
Well.
Eligible?
That wouldn't be.
That wouldn't be the.
But hopefully they could figure out what.
That would be the process of trying to figure out what they have to do to make a park board. It wouldn't be the actual park board.
Because it's a document about this thick and I'm the only one that's read any of it and I've probably read.
No, I'm talking about the town board.
The town. The town council can't be on the.
No, I realize.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going to have the money from the ball field, we'd like to see, you know, changes.
Yeah.
To our park as soon as possible and I really should do a park board so you can get a match grant, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to do is get the ball rolling as to.
Start the park board.
Let's just get a park board.
Yeah, I agree with Brett. Start the board.
That's amazing.
So. Well, let's publicly announce that we are starting a park board. Um, there are some details we need to work out on it, but we are looking for people that would like to be involved in our town and in the planning of a park project.
I've already got two people that said they would be on the park.
There's a sort of question?
Yes. Yeah.
If I may, if you had a code spells out what you have, how that board is set up and how it's surprised to allow you to eventually apply for land and one conservation funds to ID dollars, so. Your attorney can help you guide it through that. Just don't.
Thank you.
There's only issue you set up.
Yes.
Per square, so you're not discounting something.
Absolutely. Um, got a little bit more research to do, but at least if we can start getting interest in, in being part of that, um.
Can't be a board member.
Correct. Okay.
I have another name to add here.
Yes, I'll get clear on the thing. What's your guys' vision for the park? Do you guys already have in mind what you guys want to do with the park itself? Or does this board is going to be in charge of figuring out what needs to be done and then giving the few you guys getting given the okay for?
It's more along those lines. We have some broad ideas that have been brought up over time, better playground equipment, better fall protection, no more mulch. Uh, either doing a synthetic mulch or doing the stuff that's like, uh, the approved fall protection that looks like grass or some, some sort of a better surface. Maybe a stage, maybe a permanent bathroom facility that could be used not only during festival and replace our bathroom rentals at festival, but also be used for other events. Obviously landscaping. You know.
Splash pad.
A lot of people keep bringing up a splash pad. I think that's going to be a maintenance nightmare, but as long as I don't have to deal with it, then. I think that's just fine. But any, anyway, there's been some big ideas thrown out. Uh, the park board would be in charge of, of kind of prioritizing those and figuring out how to actually execute them and, and actually working on design and things like that, so. Uh, I do believe that that DNR uh, also does have planning grants available. So once you do have a park board established and you're working towards a project, they have funds that they can specifically provide for help with planning. Um, so there's even that poss- possibility of funding a consultant to come in and work with that park board on planning and design, so. Anyway, I'm, I'm excited about the prospect of moving forward, but I do know it's going to be a big undertaking and it's not going to happen tomorrow. But it sounds like we, we have some funds to work with now, hopefully, or we will have, so. Any other new business from the council?
Just a thank you to you and Luke for replacing the sewer.
Yes. Yeah, those were.
Storm drains.
I see it was down there at ten o'clock that night.
I know.
It was. I apologize to everybody for the generator running, but uh, we, we were, we were determined to get it done, so.
Thank you, Murray.
Yeah, and thank you to Luke for the long days too. Uh, okay, there's nothing else from the council? Is there anything from anybody in attendance tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a breakdown of the year festival yet?
We're going to go after that, over that here in just a minute.
And then also, are you accepting bids or should we work this one in? Are we good? I noticed today the roads weren't salted, went two hour delay. Are you guys handling that still this year?
Yeah, it's, town, town deals with it.
It was solid today. It was late.
After.
About nine o'clock.
I just wasn't sure.
Our salt truck was down. And we borrowed, uh, Arcadia graciously donated us.
Yeah, our, our salt truck had a brake problem and they were in the process of fixing those.
I just wasn't sure if that's maybe your out working this year or something.
We intend to do, to take care of an in-house, um. Yeah.
That's awesome.
Little hiccup today.
My son does it, so I was.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I never saw, uh, I don't know if it's completed or not, but they got rid of the trailer.
They did. Thank you for bringing that up.
That was nice to have that one.
Yes, they come in and I've driven down there and looked at that and it's cleaned up and just.
It looks like it was never there.
So thank you for mentioning, I meant to mention that earlier and with everything.
Do you know if they're waiting on us for?
For a trailer parking expansion?
Yeah.
That's on them. But I presented their plan. It doesn't have anything to do with the council. I mean, if they, if they abide by their zoning and then the building.
Okay, I didn't know if they were waiting on us or.
So I, yeah, I don't know if they're waiting here back for us or not, honestly. No. Oh, for code enforcement? Yeah, it would be. And uh, actually, he could call the health, the state health department. They regulate trailer parks, so they can be helpful in dealing with some of those issues too. I'll, I'll mention that too.
I just noticed that there's places in town that's getting crappy again.
Yeah. I agree. We'll do our best to try to be more on top of things. Uh, is there a motion to sign our claims in adjourn?
I'll leave if we sign them, but. Sign claims in adjourn, I'm sorry, can't call.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.